Actually, would you lead us in?
Prayer. Let's stand. Lord gracious heaven and father, we just come to you at this time. Thank you for just the breadth of life, being here, Lord, giving us health and wisdom, Lord. Help us to have that wisdom as we do about the county's business, but more than that, do about your business, Lord. Help us to be pleasing in your sight. Forgive us of our sins, Lord, and again, give us the will to do what is right in your sight. We ask these things in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Did you all mean to pledge allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, number one hundred D business is excise tax ordinance. I think this has been posted online. There's copies available if somebody wants to get one, we look it over and go over it. This is a public hearing ordinance, so if anybody has anything like a state, just raise your hand, we'll come up and we'll go over it then, so. But we'll try to say.
I read it, and it's six percent, right? Or are you taking it up?
The lots of taxes, six percent. We're not taking that up.
Oh, so you're adding another excise tax like the state did?
Miss Jackson?
No, we're not adding anything. No, the tax is not changing.
There's nothing's changed, right?
Well, I mean, there are things that are changing, but the tax rate's not.
Okay.
We're staying at six percent. The city of Blue Ridge is already at eight. Legally, I think we could go to seven, but that's not what we're here to talk about.
Legally, can't we go to eight?
Yeah, you can.
I don't think we could, but we'd have to go back through the legislature for that. We just went up last year.
The question I would have is what is changing? Right now, I believe the application fee is changing. Is anything else changing within the ordinance?
There's two things that have changed, if I'm not mistaken, right? There's changes, so if you want to just explain what is changing?
Okay, well, basically, you know, there's some terminology that we have to add to the ordinance to stay up to date, like marketplace facilitator. People don't know what that is, but it's companies like Airbnb and VRBO that are now legally required to report these taxes to the state and county. So we need to add marketplace facilitator all through the ordinance. The main things that are not housekeeping related are we'd like to do away with the collector credit. You know, that's an area for abuse. People abuse it every single month.
Now, where's that?
The collector credit, that is, if they pay on time, the ordinance is very specific, they get to take a small percentage, keep a small percentage, if they pay on time. Well, they don't always pay on time, but they still take that collector credit. So our auditors look at that. They will look at my reports and they'll say, well, this guy kept that credit, but he paid late. What did you do to get that money back? So it's a, you know, it's just constant. But more than that, when we put this in place in 1993, that credit was really meant for the owners. So everything's changed. So now, when Airbnb pays these taxes for these people, Airbnb gets to keep that credit, not our owners.
So are you changing that so the owners keep the credit? I mean, it sounds like more of an enforcement opportunity than a change of the ordinance.
Well, the owners aren't paying the taxes directly anymore. The major, these big conglomerate corporations are.
They're on platforms.
Yes, the platforms.
So what is the change in the ordinance?
Joe, there will be no collector credit, period.
Okay, so basically, we're eliminating the collector credit and asking them for the full amount of payment.
Right. What they collect, they should be remitted.
Okay, that sounds simple.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, as I'm understanding it now, big change, application fees, they're going up from fifty to a hundred or whatever that is, not a huge thing.
From twenty-five to a hundred.
Okay, that's a, not a big deal, not a big thing. And that's an annual application fee. Then we're changing terminology to update just the order, and then we're eliminating the collector credit. Is there any other change to the ordinance at this time?
No.
That's it.
No.
I'd like to speak to the comments.
And again, I appreciate this, I appreciate the conversational nature of understanding what it is we're trying to do with this ordinance, because I think, you know, it's important. The thing I think is bigger in this ordinance is literally the fact that the cities at eight percent, you know, Gatlinburg's at, I don't know, eighteen to twenty percent, New York's at thirty percent, and Fanning County is at six percent. There is literally a million dollars on the table to go from six percent to eight percent. And the formula's changed a little bit, but this, all that money literally is paid by people coming into the county from outside. I don't think too many people from Fanning County stayed in a hotel room or rented a B and B. I have a couple of times, but it was kind of a weird situation where someone won a River House and a lottery down in the Atlantic, inviting me to come be their guest. But other than that, we don't pay this tax. Other people do. That said, no matter how that money divides out, whether it's going into chamber marketing, whether it's going tourism products, or whether it's going into the general fund, it's a million dollars, folks. When we start looking at government, we start looking at sources of revenue, there aren't that many sources of revenue. Basically, we as citizens don't want a tax increase per se. Now, that said, I as an individual citizen, saying, hey, do we have to be the lowest mileage rate in the state? Perhaps not. That's a source of revenue, but it's certainly not as easy as this one, because that source of revenue comes out of your taxpayer's pocket, your voter's pocket, who are right here. So I would literally suggest we start looking now at literally a program, we're on January first, two thousand twenty-three, we actually implement an eight percent tax. And that gives us plenty of time to work with the industry, basically getting them ready for it. It brings us up to par with the city of Blue Ridge, and basically, it's a million dollars more that we can fund needed projects in the county list. So that's the bigger idea here. And quite frankly, I think as we look at ordinances, yeah, there are a couple of little changes, we have to make those, we want to do this, that, and the other. But we literally need to comprehensively take these ordinances apart and put them back together. Some of these ordinances are now twenty-something years old. And I know for a fact, and Jan can testify to this, when the animal ordinance was passed, there were literally people in the audience packing guns, saying, Mr. Chairman, now... So I know that would have a few things that went not exactly where the public would have liked them. And again, we got time, y'all had a year now to digest things. I would hope that we can get to a program of literally rewriting every ordinance in the county and codifying.
Well, and just so you know, this is a work in progress. These are the first two that we're.
We're doing it.
We're doing it.
Step by step.
It's not that we're.
And again, I would invite you, when you do animal control, Lily, invite Jan and all her friends to come participate. Same with all the others. There are a lot of people in this county that have expertises in a lot of different things, and they'd be happy to come help.
And that's why we have the public hearings, is to say, hey, is this what we need, or is this what we don't need?
Yeah, and again, I would suggest we literally have a workshop where we throw an ordinance out, like animal control, let's have thirty, forty people come in, literally, and take two or three hours to discuss what it is. It doesn't have to be an official county meeting, it can actually be done by a facilitator who can give y'all input.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I could say just a minute, I would like to see anybody with a negative, or I could see the positive there, Joe, but does anybody refute that, or do they see a con that they would like to see why it shouldn't go up from six to eight?
Well, legally, we can go from six to seven.
Okay.
But we would have to go back through the Georgia legislation. Where we are in the session, that cannot happen in 2022. It could be a request done in 2023, but the earliest that that could go into effect, if we got the seven to eight, would be July the first of 2023.
Which is what?
But I just want to tell you, it's not, I mean, there is a process.
You gotta go to legislation, they gotta read certain, and it's basically just a calendar.
So seven percent, we can raise it to seven percent, when?
We can raise it seven percent by vote to go into effect when this ordinance does, but to go to eight, has to go back to the legislature. And I'm not on, I'm not on the lodging committee in any organization, but there was some thought that we didn't want to max out, and I don't know what their thinking was behind it. I think you might want to ask some of the lodging and tourism groups to find out, because I think, Debbie, if I'm wrong, but there was a concerted effort that they wanted to be lower. I can't tell you why.
Because it has to do with the higher we go, the more money we have to put into tourism development and things like that. If we go up to eight, there are stricter rules on how we spend that money.
So we really don't get all that money?
Yeah, there's stricter rules now, maybe building an, like, what?
Like the convention center or something like that.
Well, and that's kind of what happened when we went from five to six percent. You know, a lot of folks thought that that money was, hey, it's free money.
There are different rules.
But it's still there, and it has to go.
There are different spending rules.
Forty-three percent's gonna go to marketing, eighteen percent's gonna go to product, and the rest of it goes in the general fund, and eight percent.
Now, is that set by the state, or do we have any control at all over how we?
No, that's decided by the Department of Community Affairs.
Okay, so we don't have any control over how that money is divvied out?
We don't have any. Twenty-two percent.
Of mallocations, is what we don't.
But right now, we get fifty percent, so.
Fifty versus twenty-two, did you say?
You can get another eight percent.
What, is it twenty-two the other way? Fifty versus, what's the other amount?
Uh, like forty-five, forty-two or something.
The numbers are forty-three and a third percent, eight and two-thirds percent, and fifty percent. The county gets fifty percent right now, forty-three percent goes into tourism, marketing at the chamber, and eight and a quarter percent stay in a product fund, which is managed by the county. Y'all had a meeting on January the first, meeting, decided that money, decision, and money stayed at the county. If you go to eight percent, then the product portion becomes, I believe, sixteen and two-thirds percent as a product, for products. That's what y'all did the playground equipment with and all that, okay? That money stays spent by the county. Fifty percent of it still goes in the general fund, and then the other goes into tourism marketing. So, yeah, the ratio's changed a little bit, it can go to eight percent. But again, you're raising a one million dollars for the county in total, it's still in your three pockets, whether it's the chamber's pocket.
But we're raising other people mainly too, correct?
You're raising, the person who stays in the hotel will pay two percent more on their hotel bill.
But the bottom line is that we're not paying, it's people that come and visit.
Absolutely. Yeah.
But we still, by law, have to, everybody's gonna get a, so you said about increasing, like, the chambers, they'll get more?
Well, I mean, if we go up, we're gonna bring in more money.
Yeah. Therefore, the rent will be more for both.
Yeah. But really, too, something we need to look at, people call me every day to confirm these rates, you know, so they are coming here because our rate's a little bit lower than other places around us. People look at that.
How are the city's rates, I know they're higher, how do they compare with their sales to ours? I know we have a lot more, you know, cabins and so forth, but do they, they're filled, they're filled up all the time, aren't they?
Well, I don't know, we don't share our numbers with the city and the county.
I thought it's public record, didn't I?
Well, I mean, you know, I don't look at what they're bringing in.
Okay.
They bring in their own money, they register their own properties, and, you know, they don't look at what I bring in, and I don't look at what they bring in.
The city, the city went to eight percent last year.
Right.
And.
Do they see any loss of sales because of that?
No, but, I mean, I manage twelve Airbnbs, and the city, city's got an advantage over some of the ones in the county, because that's where everybody, a lot of people want to stay in the city.
Right.
And regula, the ones that are in the city rent, from my knowledge, talking to other hosts and managers, they rent a lot, a lot. I mean, they have high occupancy rate, but partly that's due to being in the city.
That's what I'm wondering.
And because they don't have eighteen hundred like we do in the county.
Right.
But they jumped up from five to eight last year through the legislative, they went through the legislative process to have that done. And so, but you know, those are high dollar rents downtown. The other, I do have another question on, maybe Debbie or somebody, Debbie can answer it. When this is passed, will the new one hundred dollar registration fee go into effect in August like it is now?
No, it will go into effect immediately, March first. We're losing money at twenty-five dollars per rental.
So what I'm saying is, is that, so the people that've already paid for 2022, they're gonna be asked to divvy up seventy-five more dollars, is that what you're telling me?
No, when they do their renewal, if our fee is a hundred dollars, then they're gonna pay a hundred dollars this year when they renew.
But if I'm not mistaken, you've been sending me my owner's notices in August for somewhere around a while.
Well, I mean, I send them in August, but we're talking about passing this thing and going into effect March first.
So that's what I'm saying, so are we gonna send, by people paid in August?
No, they, they aren't gonna do anything until they renew this year, and they'll pay a hundred this year.
Okay.
And the ones that are, like, we registered five hundred new people last year, have already done eighty-five since January first.
My next question is, since Airbnb, since the platforms are collecting the money and submitting it to you, but the last time you and I talked about this, they weren't giving you any kind of breakdown on where that money came from as far as each individual cabinets, like, we've been filling out our report to you every month, right? And I've still been sending you my report, but I've had some hosts telling me that they're not sending their reports anymore, but you still want the reports, correct?
Not if you, not if all the rentals are paid by the marketplace facilitator. There is no reason for you to send a report.
So where's the reconciliation, where's the reconciliation of that my portion was assigned to my?
There is no reconciliation, because they passed that law in the state of Georgia, House Bill three seventeen, saying Airbnb and VRBO doesn't have to tell us who they're paying for. They send one check to the county with no explanation, no backup, and they don't even tell me what accounts they're paying for. They send one check with no backup. State said that would be okay.
So you don't need to send a report anymore either?
If you're taking private bookings, yes.
I don't take private bookings.
Then I don't need anything from you.
Except a check. Except a check.
Huh?
Except a check.
No, I don't have to send her a check anymore.
Because all of this is done through a marketplace facilitator, and they're paying those.
Yeah.
But the people that still take private bookings are still reporting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
They should be.
I know this is probably stupid question, but I'm gonna ask anyway.
There are stupid questions.
Well, I don't know, I'll look back to Debbie with you on that. But is there a way, you know, you were talking about it changes the dynamics of how much money the county gets from the general fund as opposed to how much has to go to the chamber, is that possible, as a tax, as a lodging tax? Is there a way that the county can charge, if not call it a tax, but a flat fee on and above what they're paying the rent, that could be used to go to a specific thing that the county wanted to do? Say, on top of your lodging tax, it's kind of like when I go places, sometimes they charge me a off-street parking fee, or, you know, where I have to go park in the municipal lot or whatever. Is there, is there a way to do that so that it's flat rate, and you can use it for a broader range, that commissioners would have more say in what that money got used for? If you earmark.
Sure, I think the answer is no, because like, say, for example, I go down to Savannah, and I stay over at the Westin, and I pay a resort fee, and you don't want to have a dog club anywhere near me, I'm a dangerous human, but I get slapped with it whether or not I want to or not. And I go to Tybee, and I pay a fee that goes for me to park my car in a certain place, but that's me as an individual that's, that is in theory getting some this, some benefit from. But if we as an entity, as a county entity, we follow through the Department of Revenue, they call it a tax.
So there's no possibility to do it with a fee? Like, if you have, let's just say that you decided that the county wants to raise money to, I don't know, build a, whatever, build something.
An aquacity.
And, yeah, whatever, or a new jail, I don't prefer, whatever they, whatever the purpose was, and you added, kind of like a, what do they call it in tax terms, like a local option, but it would be a flat fee instead of a tax?
You're just changing the number.
What would that be?
Well, yeah, and making it flat, it wouldn't be based on, it wouldn't be seven percent of their total.
Call it a business license, and the question comes up, why don't you charge business license? That's an easy way to get income for the county. They do it in the city. I've never lived in a place that didn't charge business license. And then you would be tapping some of that money like what she's talking about, and it's free spending because it's coming into your bank instead of through the lodging tax. And if you charged all these Airbnbs, so I'll warn you now, that soon, you're gonna get some copies of some articles that have been circulating that talk about limiting the number of short-term rentals. And we really need to have a conversation about what the impact, because I'm not hearing anybody talk about what the impact of short-term rentals is on the community as a whole.
I've heard it, it's hurtin' several businesses.
Well, process. It's a strain, isn't it, on your emergency workers?
Absolutely.
I mean, there's more people, there's more places, more.
It affects us all, is what it does. And we're, you know, on paper, we've said this for a year, I guess, you know, since I've been here, we're twenty-five thousand plus on paper. Any given time, we're twice that. So, I mean, I agree, it's an effect on public safety, it's an effect on public worth, and it's just, everything has, everything is affected by.
It's just affected our whole community very much.
But.
Well, I mean, business licenses in the city, they took a jump from seventy-five dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the smallest business. So like, if I lived in the city and I had a, even like a home-based business with one employee, me, I would be paying now two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. But the county doesn't collect any kind of business license, you could be collecting that off of these Airbnbs, or that, you could be collecting them off the individual business, because all of these cabin rentals are listed as businesses in the article.
And my, my comment would be, before you do that, why don't you keep that eight percent, you know, my sub box, instead of giving it to the chamber, that extra eight, because you just admitted that it's hurting our infrastructure, our public safety, la-da-da-da-da-da. That money could go directly to those areas and could be justified.
Is we're, we're not, as far as the chamber goes, all right, we were a fifty-fifty split, okay? And then we decided, we took this, when we went to six percent, we got an additional eight and a third, okay? That's, that's what the county got in addition. So they're at forty-one and two-thirds, and we're at fifty-eight and a third. That's the split right now.
Okay, so that extra eight is not, you're not giving that to the chamber now?
No, we're not giving it to the chamber, that's the tourism product development money that the county is in charge of.
But that money could only be spent on certain things, on certain lights.
Right. Yeah, it can only be spent on certain.
I understand that, but our whole economy is driven by tourism.
So what he's talking about, what he's talking about going to six to eight percent in the lodging tax, I mean, that's gonna, and that's gonna increase the revenues coming in for both, the chamber, the county, and the tourism product development money.
So that product development money, you're keeping it within the county offers, it is not going to the chamber?
The county, they are our fiscal agent.
So that money is going to the chamber, in order for you to spend it, it has to come back from the chamber to you.
That's correct.
So the chamber is getting it, and then you have to, so I would like to see you as a lead.
That's what I'm saying. That has been the whole thing, it's just in different accounts, but the county, it's the county's money.
I understand that, I just don't understand that step, why it has to be handed to the chamber, because.
It's, it's one more step that you can check and make sure that that money is being spent.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, I'm not accusing.
Saving it from an account for us. No, I'm not, I'm not saying you're accusing of anything, I'm just saying it's one more step, for transparency.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I'm saying that why does it even go there in the first place? Why, why?
I think it's collected there, right?
No.
I was just trying to explain that, was, it's another step, in my opinion, it's another step in transparency, this is the amount that goes into this account. And again, I just, I don't know what else to say, as far as I know, so whatever I say is wrong, I'm sure. So, yes, sir.
There are a lot of conversations that I hear about, why can't that lodging tax be spent for this, why don't we spend it on this, why don't we spend it on that? It's my understanding, based on the law, that that money can only be spent on certain tourism-type products, correct?
Correct.
Up to a certain percent after that.
It's pretty, it's pretty vague, actually.
And right now, there's so much money coming in from six percent, it's my understanding, talk to the chamber, they have a hard time spending the millions that they bring in on the specific types of things they have to spend the money on. So if we go to eight percent, they're gonna have more money, you're gonna have more money, they can't spend what they're getting now, okay? That's, that's from their mouths, not mine, okay? And so, I think another avenue to look at, and we've talked to Ralston and Goose, and talked about possibly changing the way the money can be spent, that some of that money should be the higher percentage being able, for you guys to be able to spend it on other products versus just so much having to be spent on tourism products. And that would have to be done at the state legislative level. And so if you could get them to change that law, so that you guys could spend your portion better, or on more types of projects, I think we would be better off doing it that way and doing it through law.
And we must not forget, there's fifty percent that goes into the general fund that can be used for whatever we need for it to. So maybe that could go for these infrastructures and such, that the stress that the tourism and the extra, the short-term rentals and that sort of thing are putting on the county. It's a lot of money running in.
It is, and it's a lot of money going out, trust me, and that's the whole thing. And, you know, when it's all said and done, and I'm just gonna say it, when it's all said and done, we're here to try to provide a better service for y'all. I mean, that's what the Board of Commissioners is set up to do, is to take the money in and invest it in a service for you. And that's, that's bottom line, okay? So when we try to do that, you know, hey, we have to get caught up, we've talked about that for a while, we can't catch up fifteen years' worth of status quo, we can't do that in a year's time. I mean, if there's somebody that wants to run next time, that thinks they can do it in a year, hey, I'll, I'll put my name in hat and say, hey, I'm gonna support this guy, because he can do it in a year's time. And we are, we're definitely gonna try to work to get caught up and also be proactive as well. And if anybody knows how hard that is sometimes, it's hard enough to try to be proactive. Does everybody agree with that? But then you try to get caught up and be proactive too? That's a chore, I don't care what anybody says. I'm thankful to be here, ain't no doubt about it, but just bear with us.
I think you're doing a great job.
I think, I appreciate it.
You know, some, you know, sitting back here and taking this position, listening to this stuff, and trying to get it all panned out and figured out, and I asked the same questions when I sat out there too, I was asking those same very questions, like you and Jan and some of, because I wanted to know why, because I worked the streets, I've been a cop for over four years, I work the streets. I see every tag that comes in this town during every event. I've seen up to twenty thousand people downtown in one event, arts in the park. I've talked to people from Alaska to Maine to Calif, all over the place, we met all these people. And I've always asked, how much does it take to tell where Fanning County is? Because evidently. Because evidently, whatever, and they do a great job, because everybody's here. I mean, but I often wondered, how much money does it take to advertise Blue Ridge, Georgia, and Fanning County? Because it seems like, man, they've done an excellent job on what they've done, don't get me wrong. And I look at my, my taxes, I'm a taxpayer, and I, I hate taxes like everybody else, but the thing about it is, I know that we have to collect these things, and I know that's just how it is. It's like that in the book, in, in the Bible, in Romans, you have to pay your taxes, I understand that. But the thing about it is, it's about fair tax. I ain't, I'm not one of these people that's gonna go up on your property tax, I ain't gonna do it, I'll just tell you, I, I don't, I hate that. But, sitting here learning this stuff, and hearing these numbers come in, and, and coming out of a coma, my head's about to blow already, and so I, I, I think, wow, how much money is it taking everybody to survive? And, and one thing that the chairman did say is the truth, is that we're here, and he knows where I stand and where Mr. Patterson stands, I know where the commissioner stands, or the chairman. We just want to do the best job and spend money wisely like it was ours, and that's how I try to do things. So, listen to this eight percent and a million dollars, am I, am I, am I collecting? And I understand it's a good thing, don't get me wrong, we're trying to make money off of people coming in here. And trust me, the sheriff is sitting back there, I'm the chief of police, there is people, it is costing us out the yin yang, and it, it is everything that we can do to provide a service to protect, uh, on the safety part of it. So I know, I know there's a lot of cost, it, but I just think that, and I know that one day something's gonna happen, and, and it's gonna stop, and then where are we gonna be? And, and I'm not gonna be one of those that's gonna choke my people down, or my county down, or my city down, I just ain't like that. But, trying to, trying to figure this thing out, just like by law, we have to give so much money to the chamber, I understand that, that's all I wanna give. You know, I wish there was a law over here on my skill taxes, 'cause I don't think it's right on that, and I don't wanna piss nobody off, but the thing about it is, I don't think it's fair that most of my taxes on my property go somewhere where we ought to be, and I see the bills here, and I'm thinking, good God. I see, we got two-hundred employees, we got so much stuff that we have to buy and provide for them, and take care of the roads, and, and it's just, uh, trying to figure it out, it's, it's been rough, thank, thank you Lord, he, you know, he's, he's calming me down, I, I, I'm alright, I get, I get by. But anyways, just understand that I'm with you on that part, I mean, uh, but I'm trying to figure this thing out too. And you made some great points, great points.
I have a question.
You asked.
The hundred-dollar permit fee, I mean, it went from twenty-five, which to me, that's like, why even bother if you're just gonna charge somebody twenty-five dollars?
I agree.
What, where does that hundred dollars or the twenty-five dollars go? Does it go to y'all, does it go to?
Yes.
Alright.
We do not share that with the chamber.
Okay.
That's administrative money, uh, for us issuing those licenses, and the county keeps that money.
Well, y'all, a Costco membership costs more than a hundred dollars.
Is that going to general fund?
So you're suggesting we go up even more than a hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, actually, the industry standard says that, uh, the fee should be the average nightly rental. Our average nightly rental in Fanning County is two-hundred-and-seventy dollars a week.
There we go.
Well, you know, we, you got a bunch of nice guys here, we talked about that, and Jamie says, gosh, you know, I hate to go from twenty-five to two-seventy. You know, can we step this up?
These people, the median house price right now in Fanning County is five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars, okay? And the median house price. We have basically shut out our workforce of being able to afford housing in this county, and that is not right.
Thank you. And our, our median household income's still forty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
But you got people buying these houses that have never even been to Georgia or Fanning County.
And no one's actually bought them.
No, they're just living for business.
One thing that you might be able to do, that might, I don't know how easy it would be to change, is, you know, put a whisper in the chamber's ear that instead of talking so much about tourism, try to talk about industry. We could sure look, use another Levi's type place where people got good benefits and see what they're doing to attract those kind of business.
You know, it's really sad, 'cause I remember, uh, when I was in school, you had to, you could afford to live, uh, in the town, I, I was on the Macasol side, the west side, and I drove to Blue Ridge to work. Uh, and back then, you know, those, those were in the eighties and nineties, but, or the eighties, actually, but, uh, but what I'm getting at is that these people nowadays, you go by some of these restaurants, you still today cannot go inside and sit and eat, because, their people can't afford to come up here with, for, because of the gas, to work up here, because they, they, they don't live around here now, you, there's nobody, and you know, what we do, I mean, it's just, it's inside-
We're gonna lose our first responders, we're gonna lose our teachers, because they can't afford to live.
RNs.
RNs.
That's what-
So we gotta be thinking about it. And, you know, these people that are coming in and buying these properties, more power to them, but a hundred dollars for a permit fee, and that's all they have to do, I, I don't-
The department, tell you what, tell me about the department.
Uh, well, because we don't have a business license in the county, we have to give them something so they can legally charge and collect this tax. Years ago, fifteen years ago, we were told by the Department of Community Affairs, you cannot call that a business license, because Fanning County doesn't have business licenses. So we came up with the term lodging certificate, so we can charge them for a lodging certificate. So that's what it is, and right now, it's twenty-five dollars a year per-
When was that set?
Per property. That was set, uh, ten years ago, but when the ordinance went into effect, we didn't register people. Well, the problem with that is, you've got all these people up here running these B and Bs, and you don't even know who they are, or, uh, you know, when I register somebody, I gather all their information, so if the sheriff's office needs information on who's in this rental cabin, I can give it to them.
So what can we do to help you?
Uh, just, let's, let's come to an agreement on this ordinance.
We're here.
Something fair, you know, uh, the reason we set a hundred dollars is because we don't wanna shock everybody. I mean, it would be rough to go from twenty, you know, we here all the time, y'all are greedy.
You don't want shocking, you know what's shocking, when me and my wife go to me-
We do, it, it happens all the time.
Well, uh, well, tell me to go down and eat somewhere, because it's just like, when we go eat breakfast or lunch, it's shocking to me when it costs me fifty bucks just to have breakfast in Blue Ridge, Georgia.
Right.
Let's pass it to y'all in this bar.
Speaking of greed, I have a rental on both sides of me, one charges on the average through the season, 'cause they do change their rates, about two-hundred dollars. The other one, its rate runs from six-hundred-and-fifty dollars to eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars a night. So I don't feel bad about sticker shock if you raise it more than a hundred for a-
And like Joe said, this, this is people, we're making this money off of people that's coming in here.
And there's a huge trend here, basically, people looking, coming in, big, building bigger houses, I have my land locked up to conservation, I can't run one on my property, but most of the people want to buy, only want to run an Airbnb.
That's all they want.
Yeah.
They do, they're buying these-
They're only wanting to do some property.
That's right.
And they don't live here, they're trying to manage this property from wherever they do live. There's no local person to call and say, hey, get over here quick, you know, there's something wrong, your water's leaking, your house is on fire.
If the national average is one thing-
You mentioned something about safety the last time.
Yeah.
That, that's-
I mean, it would be, my neighbor just built a Airbnb, or a cabin, she uses an Airbnb, and he was nice, he called me, he called all the surrounding people, and said, just wanna let you know that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, and it's like four-hundred-and-fifty dollars a night. So, uh, I, maybe this sounds terrible, but I personally wouldn't, it wouldn't, I wouldn't shed a tear if you charged a business license that were based on how much they made in rentals previous. Make it on a slide and scale, you, we made ninety-nine thousand last year, and we're gonna charge you X percent for your permit this year.
We can do that if we have business license county law, 'cause that's what she was saying, that's, I'm not saying yea or nay, that we couldn't do that.
Well, John, you, you not think that that would be a-
Every time it's been mentioned before, I got something thrown at me, so well-
Listen, I mean, honestly, they're gonna always say it's too much, whether it's fifty dollars, or a hundred dollars, or a thousand dollars.
Well, see, it would be on, not just them, it would be on every attorney, doctor, something, and I'm not saying yet, no, but I'm just saying that in previous administrations, whenever this was considered, Debbie's sitting here, and it was like, not no, but blank no.
Yeah.
But things are changing, we, we need this.
I wanna second what Sandy said about the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Like I said, I, I manage twelve Airbnb's, one of my own, I would have to pay the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I don't have a problem with that whatsoever. But I just want you to know that I've been doing this for almost five years, so I have personal contact with all the guests that come. I talk to them all the time, and in the last two years, we're all in real estate. These cabins, three weeks ago, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, seventeen, seventeen offers, had to be in by five o'clock on Saturday. I had previously talked to this guy about Airbnb, he wanted to invest in, in Blue Ridge, twenty-seven years old, Salt Lake City, Utah. Learned about Blue Ridge through some articles being written about Blue Ridge, there's a lot of information out there. There's so many people wanting to get into Airbnb now, because they think they're gonna get rich, okay? So all these articles are being written all over the world, literally, about how to get into Airbnb, there's, there's, uh, YouTube videos out there about how you can get rich, there's companies that have sprung up to help people get into Airbnb. These people are coming in here, buying these things, sight unseen, he paid seventy thousand dollars over, he went up to six-hundred-and-twenty, out of seventeen, seventeen offers, this was three weeks ago, four weeks ago. And I, I had talked to him last Thanksgiving, he called me to get some insight about investing in, in Blue Ridge, what was the market like? And I come to find out from A.J. Petrillo, when he, when he sold the house, went for six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, I put two and two together, called the guy in Salt Lake City, he's the one that bought that house, sight unseen, no due diligence, no inspection, nothing, and they'll tell you the same thing, it's happening every day here, and it's because Fanning County has been put on the map as a good place, because when they see these prices here at six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for a tourist town that has-
It's a deal.
It's a steal.
Yeah, but they're running us out of town.
Yeah, but we're subsidized today, that's what we're doing, we're subsidized.
To them, to them, to them, it's a steal, I can tell you how many people that I've talked to that go, I wanna buy a cabin here, because I can't touch a vacation cabin in another tourist town in Arizona, or California, or Utah, Colorado, for half this, for, for double this price.
That's what I was saying before, let the free market decide what the tax value is on that property, 'cause if they're willing to pay that, that's what their tax bill is for the next year.
But we can't do that, and I, and I'll, I'll send that to the government, so.
But not my, not my owner, so.
What, what you brought up was, was fantastic, we were all like, hey, yeah, I can't forget, well, we can't do that.
Not my only, you're gonna walk away with two hundred and thirty dollars.
So, sorry, appreciate it.
But y'all, also, what we're doing, you gotta think, we're taking away the collector credit, we'd like to, you know, we don't wanna just, you know, hurt people.
That collector's credit is three percent of-
Yeah, but it's hurting some companies, man, you know, we've got one company that, uh, paid over a million dollars last year.
Yeah, Miss Bowden, basically made a lot of-
Commissioner Patterson asked earlier, what's the downside to this? You know, the downside is that eventually, the market in real estate gonna change, it's not gonna stay up here forever. It wasn't, what, fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago, they, uh, people that sold houses, they didn't even try anymore, they went out and did, done construction, because there was no money in it, so they started building houses for the everyday person. We make, Fanning County is on the map because of downtown Blue Ridge, for the most part. Some of it's got to do with outing the county and buying a place for the people, but if it wasn't for downtown Blue Ridge, it would not be going like it is now. And I've always thought, what's the market gonna bear? At what point do we tax them to the point that they decide, I wanna take my business somewhere else?
Good point, ladies and gentlemen, I really hate to do this, we've had some really good discussion over this, but I need to move on to the next, um, hearing. So, hey, we'll have a second public hearing in, in two weeks, and we'll have our next meeting is when it leaves, so, um, hey, bring some more pros cons, um, to that, and, and again, I appreciate everybody's input, we took some good notes, and, uh, you know, we may go up that even higher, and, uh-
There you go, we appreciate y'all saying that, really, 'cause y'all is a dog and- And when Johnny, you said, what can you do to help, like this lady in the back, if you guys will call me with these addresses, I'll check and make sure we've got them registered. The worst thing would be that they're renting these properties and they are not registered. We gotta get everybody registered to be on the same wavelength, I'll give you my card.
Certainly, thank you.
Alright, so, uh, that being said, um, make sure Tom makes a motion that we close, uh, the first public hearing.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Ah.
Alright, so on to our, um, second public hearing, which will be the alarm ordinance. Anybody have any questions or concern on the alarm ordinance? We need, we know, the changes that, uh, I think we need to talk about the changes that are gonna be made for the alarm ordinance, so, Robert, if you wanna just stick on that just a minute?
It's basically, the, the biggest change is just adding fire alarms to the ordinance. Um, we've had the alarm ordinance in place for law enforcement, for responses to burglar alarms, uh, you know, these are automated alarms, um, previously. And our, uh, false alarm calls for fires, last year, we ran, I think, sixty-six false alarms. Um, we take our, you know, we, we always respond to engines, uh, usually another truck, a med unit, uh, there's usually anywhere, what, like, from four to ten people that respond on each fire alarm call. And I don't think we had an alarm call last year that was, was actually a fire, it was on false alarms, every, every alarm we got for fires. Um, so it gets expensive for us, it probably averaged three hundred dollars per call, uh, to respond to these.
What were the reasons, Robert, of false alarms, people?
Uh, weather-related, um, faulty alarms, faulty equipment, just-
Is that sixty-six calls is what you're saying?
Sixty-six.
They weren't playing a gag on anybody?
No, 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 it was just, it was faulty equipment, or, same thing is with burglar alarms, you know?
Okay.
Um, sometimes the wind, but, but-
It was helpful if we get those things fixed, so they weren't as faulty, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, what?
Get, get the alarms fixed, or, uh, either be getting new ones, because it costs money to go out there, as you just said.
Right, right, by, by adding us to the alarm ordinance, then after the third alarm, um, we can actually, we can bill them for the response. And, uh, that's an incentive for them to get their alarm fixed.
Okay.
Um, also, in addition to the, the cost, and the, there's also the safety aspect, I mean, we're sending, you know, trucks that weigh what?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand pounds out on the road, running emergency, um, it's, you know, it's, it's not, it's not safe if we don't have to be out there. And as I said, uh, we're not trying to dissuade people from having fire alarms, they're a great thing, but they need to take care of them, and, uh, I think it's been an incentive for them to make sure they take care of their alarms and stuff.
Well, like with the burglar alarms, you know, until we let people know that, hey, we've been to your house five times this year, and every time it's been a false alarm, you're gonna share in this burden, we, we will send our officers, but you need to pay your share. So that's why it's, it's, like Robert said, the first two times we go in a year, it's free, the third time, it's fifty- So that's why it's, it's, like Robert said, the first two times we go in a year, it's free, the third time it's fifty, and it goes up from there.
And Sheriff, if you, how many calls did you have that, that were...
We answer eight-hundred false alarm calls every year. And we, I mean, to put that into perspective to you, we answer eight-hundred alarm calls every year too. They are one-hundred percent false alarms.
One-hundred percent?
Eight-hundred of them a year. And it's every day. Renters busted into cabins, not caring that it's got an alarm, other than they don't care if the alarm goes off. It's cleaning ladies, it's maintenance men, um, it's homeowners that don't know how to work their own alarm. Sometimes it's the weather, sometimes it's the cat running across the floor. It's a wide variety of reasons, but what it is not is people breaking into houses. This has been the, the biggest joke that I've ever seen in my life. But I've been the sheriff for fifteen years. And alarm calls have got to stop. It's not working.
I agree. It's, it's out of control.
It is. We've got, and it's just, I know you're wanting to talk, but...
No, no, go ahead.
Historically, here's what happened. When we started having a problem several years ago, we did just exactly what Roberts wanted to do with his fire alarms, now start charging people. Well, we did that. I think Debbie told me the county brings in somewhere around a couple of thousand dollars every year off of alarm things. Well, you've gotta have three before you get fined. We've got four thousand alarms in this county. If they, these eight-hundred people that don't have the one alarm, they don't get fined. They don't get fined. So that's what's happened. The, the numbers have just got so high and the, the amount of alarms and the amount of people here and all of it, it's just blown, plum up.
Well, and for them to know that one-hundred percent of those calls were true false alarms.
And see, here, here's, trust me, these alarm people have, um, have brought up all kinds of solutions to me about changing or about finding people and things like that. We've tried that. We were hoping that would stop it, but it didn't stop it. It didn't slow it down, it sped it up. Or it started speeding up, but it didn't stop it from speeding up, we'll say.
And I would say that's because we have so many more rental cabins now.
It is. That is, is a...
Y'all, it is.
Just a combination of different things.
We're getting ready to do something inside to say, "Tell them our false alarms." You got some, and they'll tell you, you got some, they'll just tell you when you call them, "Hey, your alarm's going off", they'll just lock the door back or just check the grounds, they're not coming in.
Yeah.
And that, that really burns you high and in right there.
Well, here's another thing that happens too that, uh, that I, it makes me worry about our shafts, they get so complacent on these alarms.
Yeah, you start, yeah.
One of these days, they're gonna go to the house and it's gonna be the real deal and it's, they're not, they're gonna have their guard down. When an alarm goes off, you know, like a panic clock, a panic alarm in a business. Now, granted, what we're talking about here does not affect any commercial businesses. It don't affect panic alarms, medical alarms, or anything like that. But when a panic alarm goes off, our guys take it serious. Whether it be in a house, or in a business, uh, or wherever it's at, they take those serious. And, you know, unfortunately, they're always false too, but, you know, they, they need to still exist.
Is this from old equipment or the new?
It's from a variety of different things. It's a lot of it's what I was just talking about, about use your air, about people just renting cabins, uh, you know, just busting in the house, uh, not caring if there's an alarm. Uh, some of it's equipment, some of it is just, uh, use your air, it's just a variety of different things. Sometimes it's the weather thing.
Well, and a lot of it is these people that don't live here, when their alarm goes off, they call and one dispatch an officer and they don't care.
They don't care, it's free protection. We've been the guinea pigs for the last fifteen years, for sure. We took the brunt of it.
But a true alarm is worth its weight in gold.
Yeah, if we ever had one, we're waiting.
Wait till the neighbor sees that it's on fire.
Yeah, it's... Maybe tomorrow, Larry. Maybe tomorrow.
Based on what Dan said and, and Robert said, I, I think Robert said it was still gonna be after three, right?
Yeah.
It's on the fire alarm. We're not gonna respond anymore.
Yeah, on the fire alarms, but it's also three on the burglar alarms now, and you're saying that it doesn't, doesn't do any good to find them anyway?
It didn't, no, it didn't for us on the residential purpose. Now, I don't know what kind of, I mean, he's gotta do something, but that, that really is...
How many of those sixty-six were repeats?
I don't have those numbers, but there were a lot of them were.
They were, well, a lot were repeats?
Yeah.
There's gotta be, have to be some type of...
Now, if they're, they're having repeat stuff, that finding them probably would've.
That's what we found, yes.
Yeah.
When you get their attention and you let the public know, "Hey, we're gonna start billing you for this",
Yeah.
the next time that alarm goes off, they say, "Uh, don't go, don't worry about it, everything's fine."
But still, you know what happens? A lot of them, they just pay their fine. Cuz at the end of the calendar year, it rolls over, they start all over again. They don't mind paying for it.
That's what I'm saying. I don't think it should be three. I think it should be lower. And also, once that...
Money's nothing to these people.
I know, but once that, once that, once that, you go out there and it's a false alarm, okay? Or you go out there and false alarm, then is Debbie the one that's told and then Debbie has to follow up? Or does the, the, does the departments follow up at that time?
Debbie does all that. She gets...
So it could be two and three days later or after, you've been notified that there was a false alarm, and then you're contacting them to get their money?
Uh, well, I'll, we just bill them when it's appropriate to bill them. You know, like, you just tell the system, "Give me all the three times we've been out there, three times in a year", and it sits out a bill. And we just mail them the bill.
They're aware in advance that they're, that this is in place because they have to, they have to sign a, uh...
Right.
...alarm agreement.
But that's the people that are, that's the people who have registered with a lodging company. All these alarms are not necessarily all short-term rentals, right?
Oh, that's correct. A lot of these are people that live here.
So how are those people then notified about the alarm thing?
The people that live here, their alarms aren't going off.
I'm talking about the people with the, with vacation rentals that are not necessarily in an STR.
Well...
Or a platform.
Uh...
Or they don't go through you.
Yeah, everything goes through me.
Every alarm has to be registered.
I know that, but I'm talking about those are people that come to register their cabins. What about the people that the alarms are going off and they're not, they're not renting their cabins out and their alarms are going off because the cleaner came in there to clean it, or the maintenance guy came in there, but they're not, they're not registered with you?
We have very few problems with local people, because they know what we're doing, they can't afford it.
This would be a local person, this would be people that I know that have cabins up here that don't rent them out.
Well, Richard, there's all kinds of problems, but that's the reason we gotta do something about it.
Right, I agree.
Well, I mean, they're required to register.
There's, there's all kinds of alarms out here that are not registered.
How do they know they have to?
Well, their alarm company tells them. ETC, when they register, when they put in an alarm, they register that home, and they pay that ten-dollar fee.
I just set up a simple safe in a house and, and simply safe didn't tell me to call you.
Simply safe don't know about our ordinance. I mean, most of the alarm companies pay them. They pay the...
Well, they're an alarm company.
Well, they don't know about our...
But they're not locals. They don't care.
Like what we're talking about.
The local companies will work with us.
I'm not trying to argue, I'm just giving you some scenarios that...
Well, what we're gonna do, Richard, fix and fix it.
I agree.
Yeah, it is. It's gonna fix it.
It has to be fixed. That's ridiculous.
I think, I think I see what you're talking about. So if, if we do get an alarm from one of these houses that you're talking about that's not registered, then it's reported to her, that address, she contacts them and says, "Hey, why's your alarm not registered?", is that correct, Debbie?
That is correct.
And then it gets registered at that point.
And how do you contact them?
I send them a letter. We know where they responded, so I'll send a letter to that owner saying,
You're, you're system's not registered. I got it.
The only, the only recourse we've had on people like that is just not to respond to their alarm. But that, you know, then you have to keep a list and somebody has to monitor it. That's just extra work. Um, if this new ordinance passes the way it's written, with the exception of Robert's fire alarm stuff in it, uh, we wouldn't even need, if we do business the way this ordinance is gonna be, uh, the labor judge will be drafted, then we wouldn't even need an alarm ordinance here in Fanning County. Because we're not gonna respond until we've been shown that there's a need for us to respond. Like somebody on video, somebody on somebody's porch, a neighbor seeing somebody at the house that shouldn't be, or some kind of second type of confirmation. In other words, from now on, just the fact that somebody's residential burglar alarm is going off is not gonna prompt a response for us. So, you know, we could, we could totally do away with an alarm ordinance after this.
That's good.
If it were not for the fire in that, Robert's got some, some work to do. Yeah.
What happens, I mean, like me, I have rentals all around me. Those people could care less about me. I mean, I don't, you know, I mean, what, you've gotta have a second verification before you come if I'm, we're, we're armed with...
Absolutely, yes.
Well, then, I guess there might not be a purpose in me having one.
There's none.
Well, I guess, anybody wants to work in?
No, no, no.
A burglar alarm is not gonna stop anybody from being around.
That would, yeah, eight dogs, the dog's body.
Yeah, hey, the dog will go to animal control, we, we have some down there, we'd be glad to put them down. Like Dan said, they were dogs.
I'll tell y'all a quick story. I was reading this story about this big grizzly bear that they got in captivity out in West Seattle. They've got it in a museum where people can come see. And they, his name's Ben, and they got thinking about Ben needs something to do. So they got him a job. All these people that build these bear-proof coolers and bear-proof containers and bear-proof this and bear-proof that, they can send it out to Ben to test for free. And he did it. If they, if it makes it through Ben, then it's certified. They've been able to raise their price on all these products because it's tested for bear-proof. So the same thing with the dogs, Jan. We could give the dogs at Animal Control a job.
There you go. Uh... Hey, I wouldn't be sarcastic about that. I think it's a good idea, sir.
Are we just, that ready?
All right, so again, we thank y'all for, uh, for comments and, uh, we'll have a second one here at, at our next meeting. So, um, I'll make a motion that we, um, um, in the second public hearing for, or the second public hearing, which is the first public hearing, if there's anyone. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Okay, all right. All right, so now we're gonna open up our regular meeting. And, um, just while I'm with you, I'd like to have another prayer. Good, we'll open up this one. So if, if everyone will stand straight a little bit.
We're bowing heads. Lord, gracious, heavenly Father, we can't pray to you, thank you enough. We did it a hundred times for today, Lord, you bless us so abundantly, and you bless this county abundantly, Lord. We just thank you for all you've given us, help us to be, all of us, not just commissioners, but all of us to be good stewards of what you've given us. And just be thankful, people, that we can, uh, live here and discuss civilly and, and, and improve our community, Lord, with your blessing on it. Before we go with us to the rest of this meeting now, thank you for each and every individual here tonight, Lord, as they have an interest in the county and they've taken their time to come out here. And help us as commissioners to be just servants. We ask that cross-night. Amen.
Amen. Yeah, the glory is placed on the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just as for all.
I don't... As in our unfinished business, look forward to the minutes of, uh, January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, regular scheduled board meeting. Um, Commissioner Patterson, any errors or omen mentions in the minutes that are read?
I have none, Chairman.
Commissioner Serpents?
Oh, sir.
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, regular scheduled board meeting. I'll make that motion next for a second.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Ah.
Okay, number five is board action or discussion on bids for the camera system at the recreation center. This was tabled for our last meeting, if you recall. Um, one thing we wanted to look at was to make sure, uh, that the bids were, were apt as to apt as. And, uh, when we started looking at the bids, we did realize that, um, and here I go saying we again. Uh, we realized that, uh, there were three different companies that were involved. Uh, not the ones that sent in the bid, but the, the manufacturers. And, um, what we've actually done, um, was try to reach out to the three that had put bids in to give us a price on each, uh, product, each manufacturer. So I think we had Honeywell, Alibi, and Techpro, I think, were the three manufacturers of the, uh, camera systems. And, uh, we felt that it would be, um, that would put us, put everybody on even playground to get, uh, to get a bid for all three cameras. So each, each company that put a bid in will also get a bid on three different manufacturers if they invite that. So that way it's only, um, that, that's obviously my suggestion. And, um, any discussion from you gentlemen?
Sounds good to me. That's a good tactic. Fair way to do it.
And, uh, I think in the, in the future, when we, when we do something like this, especially, um, like if it's the rec center or somebody like that, you know, whoever it is, if this is what we're gonna do, put camera systems up there, then maybe we can go and say, hey, we, we would like Honeywell, uh, camera system, put in. And that way we ask for bids for a Honeywell system and, and, and three different companies, manufacturers, so. Um, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, table this, um, until such time as, hopefully it'll be our next meeting, but until such a time as, uh, those three bidders can give us, uh, the bids for those three different manufacturers. I'll, I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, okay. All right, so, uh, under new business, number six, we have the Fanning County Sheriff's Office, uh, to discuss, uh, x-ray body scanner for the detention center. Sheriff Kirby?
So, uh, I was here tonight to just to kind of let y'all know that we're gonna start looking at, uh, getting the body scanner business into jail. Um, we're gonna start taking some bids and finding out what kind of equipment's out there and how much it costs and things like that to, uh, try to alleviate some of the problems that we've been having.
Contra ban, Governor?
Contra ban, absolutely. Um, fentanyl, heroin, um, we've had three overdoses in the jail, believe it or not. Um, the, I, I don't know how familiar y'all, y'all are with heroin, but, uh, you know, a dose of heroin will fit on the end of men's think pin there. Especially when it's laced with fentanyl, if it is a kid, if it's naked, so, um, we're just trying to avoid a catastrophe. Um, this stuff is near impossible to find, even in a strip search. Which, everybody comes into the jail in a strip search, but, um, it, it's still getting in. And not in, I mean, not every day, not to that extent, but, um, every now and then, if you will.
It only takes one.
And it only takes one. We had one overdose the other day, and thank God they was able to narc him, and he's still there in the jail. Uh, and, and got him back, but, I mean, we could lose somebody in a heartbeat. Uh, but that stuff's super new to dangers. Um, so, that is pretty simple. Uh, we're, we're trying to keep that from happening. So the, the only way that I know to do it with the staff that we've got is with an x-ray body scanner. Um, I've done a little dabbling around, learning about those things, but not enough to be able to educate y'all and all about it, so.
Can you, can you help us on price-wise?
Well, I'm thinking Johnny and the one, and around a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is what I'm thinking. Uh, certainly give or take a little. Uh, there's probably some, some low-end stuff out there, there's probably some higher-end stuff out there. So that, that's where I've got to get educated, is what's out there, what it does, what we need, what counts. So, um, I'm just here tonight to let y'all know that I'm getting ready to start taking those steps. And, uh, when I feel like that the time's appropriate, and I've got enough information to where it's worth y'all's time to listen to it, I'll come back.
That's it.
Sheriff, do we have any idea if there's any state contracts out there for that type of stuff?
Uh, not yet, I don't. Um...
You're going with that.
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. Um, I think there is a state contract out there that's been awarded to, to one of the companies. But I'm not sure which one it is and I don't know, um, what that actually does. Sometimes a state contract's not necessarily the cheapest price, but, um, I guess it's just, just the, the, the best bid, if you will, which is not always the cheapest one.
Danny, any other sheriff, uh, county, any other counties have one of these?
Yeah, they do. Um, I got my information from the Floyd County Sheriff, the retired, the, the recent retired Floyd County Sheriff, Tim Burkhaller. Uh, he educated me just a little bit about some of that stuff. And that's kind of what got me heading down that road and thinking about it. I don't know anything else to do.
Did he say it helped? It, it solves some problems?
Yeah, yeah, I've heard, I've heard that it, it does really make a, a
A difference.
Heck of a difference, yeah. Sure does. Um, and just the threat of that, you know, just somebody knowing, you know, it's like somebody on a traffic stop that's holding a load of dope. When they see you pull up with a dog, they're gonna give you consent to search because they know if they don't, you're just gonna pull your dog.
Yeah.
When they walk in that jail and they've got some suitcase and they know they're fixing to walk through that x-ray machine, they'll probably give it to you.
Yeah.
So, anyway, guys, that's all I've got. If y'all've got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them, but it's a little early. Can't be able to tell you much.
So before we put, uh, put out the bid, you wanna find, you know, put on our feet, uh, out, you wanna do a little more research and then we'll come back and then put it out for bid?
Well, what I thought I would do is just find out what's out there and get them to send me quotes. Is, is that not what putting it out for bid means?
Yeah, but we have to make, we have to vote to put it out.
You have to do it, let's see, get one to weigh. If he come, if the sheriff's able to find out what he want, what, find what he wants, needs, I, I'm not saying wants, needs, sir.
I'd rather have a vote, but.
Yeah. What you need on a, on a government-approved contract, then all he has to do is come back and say, this is what
Yeah, that takes the bidding process out of it.
And then you don't even have to do the bidding process. If he comes back and says, I need to put out a bid for a X-type that does this, this, and this, and that we can read it remotely and out, then we would have to put out a bid.
What do you mean, put out a bid? What does that mean? Does that, does that mean more than me just calling people and say, hey, send me a quote on your machine?
We have to say, because, to do it so that you can don't call your buddy Sam and your buddy Judd when you don't call Dick, because you're bad at Dick.
You gotta give everybody the opportunity.
We, it has to formally go out and then it's come back in, it's sealed. And I realize there's not as many people that are making those things probably as there are fire trucks, but it's the same principle.
All right. Well, what I'll do is I'll find out if there is a state contract. And if there is not, or if the state contract is not the type of machine we need,
Absolutely.
then I'll come back and ask y'all for us to put it out to bid. How about that?
All right.
Good deal. All right, thanks a lot.
Thanks, sir. Number seven, Fannie County Fire Chief Larry Thomas, property for Fire Station Five and purchase of doors for Fire Station Three. So let's tackle, uh, property for Fire Station Five. Start out. All right, go ahead, sir.
Fire Station Five. I know we talked about it, got it approved for the one acre and it was gonna be one plus acres. Our, uh, land conservationists went out, done a few holes, this, that, and another, kind of warned us a little bit. We are in the flood plain with a partial of that one acre. So I went back to Rodney, the owner of the property, and asked him what it would be to go ahead and add another acre to it and get us a little bit higher up out of that flood plain. The field would be set completely out of the flood plain by adding that extra acre. For adding that extra acre, uh, the price will go from eight thousand to twelve thousand. Instead of eight thousand dollars for one and a little bit of an acre, for two acres it'd be twelve. And that's what I was wanting to go ahead and move forward with. And, uh, this would be the plat that would actually get registered if we could move forward with. But I, did y'all approve as far as adding that additional four thousand dollars to it?
So you're gonna have a total of, here, Larry, uh, Chief of one point nine eight?
Yes, sir. That's two one hundreds, less than acre, uh, a complete two acres.
And we'd be out of the flood plain then?
Yes, sir, with the building.
Well, I know we're gonna need, um, we're gonna need a station out there because five is, it's not in good shape at all.
It's actually the only fire station that we don't have running water inside.
Is it?
And the porter, John, ain't either.
That's rare.
You got a truck going out.
Two trucks.
You got plenty of water.
Oh, that's all the water.
Yeah, it's all the water. Make coffee, I like it.
Thank you, sir.
John, any discussion on this, boy?
I have none, Chairman.
Is that, is that all the land that that boy right there, say, right there, as far as, like, trying to square up that property is, is that his too?
Uh, what's that, that little piece there?
Yeah, that little piece where we.
Actually, well, okay, yeah.
Oh.
That's our little pump house, boy.
Oh, good, okay. No, that's good.
Yeah, that actually blocks some gazeler.
Yeah.
Fannie County.
Yeah.
That's ours.
Yeah.
Oh.
And this will be paid out of, um, we, we approved the eight thousand dollar, we, we approved that out of, um, I just want Sheriff to tell us where we approved that out of.
Oh, pocket. Did that come out later? Was that Sploss? I thought it was Sploss.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking it's Sploss capital.
So we, we approved an additional four thousand, um, to go along with this to, to complete the, basically, one point nine eight acres. All right. Any other discussion? Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion that we approve an additional, uh, four thousand for a total of twelve thousand to buy a total of one point nine eight acres, uh, for, uh, future Station Five.
Correct.
I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Next item, look for bid.
Look for bid. Actually, the second item that I was wanting to talk about is going ahead and moving forward with two doors that need replaced up at Station Three.
Total's gonna be almost six thousand dollars?
That's correct.
They're insulated?
They are.
No windows?
No windows.
What's the current condition of the doors? Tell us about that.
The doors that are up there now has actually been beaned and hit with a truck. And, uh, as far as that goes, the guy that come in was the guy that works for this company and looked at them. And he said that we're on the verge of having to do something to them, essentially weekly, simply for cause of the damage that the door has received. The first two panels were bent, but he also said that the, the way that the door got bent, you know, uh,
We can't fix them.
it would be hard to repair it and keep it running in line like it's supposed to.
What we're gonna do with the old doors?
Let it throw away.
Have it throw away.
That's why I built my fingers crossed that it will.
Is this, uh, amount five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars, uh, including labor and everything?
Totally, yes, sir.
Thing I can recommend is if we replace these doors, that first two people in that truck, one of them needs to get started helping the other. Like, I mean, back them up, need to put a mirror in there, let them know whatever we need to do because, um, again, and we know things happen. We, we, we know things happen, but, um, the more we can keep, uh, to not allow that to happen, it's just a matter of teamwork, it's all of this communication, sir.
Safety first and safety before.
Larry, we have two men in the truck always when they're going in the.
Unless one of them's just got in and pulled it out to wash it outside and then back it in when they're, uh, usually, well, the truck, yeah, in that.
We need to have two, yes. Should have.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
No.
No, sounds good, Dave.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we spend fifty-nine hundred and twelve dollars and one other thing, what is that coming out of, is that coming out of your budget or is that coming out of Sploss?
That could come out of Sploss or capital, my capital, but yeah, I do know like, uh,
Capital, like, what's the life expectancy on a door?
Something like this, like thirty.
The way they drive, not too long.
What's, what's the meaning? If, if, if it's that long, it could come out of Sploss? With some little thirty-year suggested warranty on it, it could come out of Sploss.
Well, and, and the reason I say that, we've got doors that are probably thirty years old.
Right.
Wish they can take better care of stuff, but we've got a couple of miracle of that.
I'm surprised they lasted as long as they have because when you back in, the truck's got that much room on each side of the door as it goes in. That's why the big move and the big push for Station Two, so.
You know, that, that also, he, he may need to be in, in the training.
Yes.
On how to back a truck up.
They.
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 All right. So we'll potentially bring that out of Sploss now. Okay. So I'll, uh, I'll make the motion that we approve fifty-nine hundred and twelve dollars to, uh, replace the doors at Station Three. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
My second.
All in favor? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, George.
Number eight is board action on the amendment since July thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Board minutes as to the adoption of county road to be reflected as hidden code road and not being trails in road. Um, I think when we originally, uh, took on that, and I think it's three tenths of a mile, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, um, that tied in that area down there, uh, we, we generally think that is trails in. Mr. Ratcliffe has, uh, has since come back and told us that it's hidden code road. So, uh, we do need to, uh, to make a motion to amend that, uh, say hidden code road and not trails in road. Any discussion on that, gentlemen?
That won't make a, a big difference other than just the name, right?
It's kind of twisting the names, all of them.
Right, okay.
All right. So, um, I'll ask for a motion that we, uh, amend the minutes to read, uh, the adoption of county road from being trails in road to hidden code road. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, public commentary. Anyone, got anything to say? Raise your hand. Come on up. Go over if you think. Anybody?
I think everybody's going out.
I mean, you know, I always run my mouth at the end, so you can't fight, but, um, you know, I really wanna thank this community, um, for, for stepping up during the passion of one of our deputies in his wife this past week. It is truly amazing how this community has come together. And I also want to, uh, commend our neighboring counties. I know they don't get enough, um, there's just nothing that, that you can say about them. They actually stepped up, the, the law enforcement from Union County and Gilman County stepped up and covered calls here in Fannie County to allow our deputies to go to this funeral. So, um, if you guys are watching, Union County, Gilman County, I really wanna thank you guys for stepping up and helping out our community in our time of need. And I want them to know that if they ever need anything from us, that, I mean, I personally will do anything I can to help them. And I, I think the sheriff, uh, fire chief, anybody will be the same way. But this community stepped up, uh, to the plate and we, we ask for continued prayers for that family. Because they're, those kids are gonna need some moving forward. And it, it does, it touches me. I'm not gonna lie to you. You know, it brings a little charity out of it, think about it. And if it don't, something's wrong with you. I'm not gonna lie to you. But, uh, but I just wanna thank each and every one of y'all, uh, for being part of this community and, and I'm proud and I love this community and I'm proud to be here, so.
Commissioner Patterson? No, I was, had the privilege to go to that funeral and, uh, it was just a great display of unity within everybody, as, as, uh, our chairman said. The unity, uh, there were flags all over the road going after the funeral. Larry, I saw Larry, they had a big, big flag over there by, uh, the hospital. And, uh, it was just, uh, a tribute to the unity that, that, that we have here in, in other counties that we work together. And, uh, it's a sad thing. I, I will say this, if anyone likes, would like to donate to the Children's Trust Fund, uh, you can go to the United Community Bank. It's very simple, very easy, take five minutes. But, uh, you know, we'll always need our prayers and support.
Commissioner Patterson?
I'm just glad to be here and I, I do, and, uh, I love my county and I love my community and God be the glory. So thank you all for coming out tonight.
All right. That being said, we'll close public commentary. Gentlemen, any need for executive session?
I don't have any, I just.
I don't give a.
All right. That being said, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. All in favor? Thank y'all.